Here in person and all those of you that are watching online, thank you for being with us today. We will start with our invocation by Ameed Abdul Rahad Shamir of the Tahad Islamic Center of Wilmington, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
And that's Abdul, Rama, and Sharif. Actually went to school with his son and daughter.
Thank you. We stand here, we humbly bow before Almighty God, the merciful benefactor, the merciful redeemer, the mighty, the wise, the most high, the giver of life and possessor of power of all things. We ask for your divine providence over this meeting of the New Hanover County Board of Commissioners. Grant them insight, wisdom, and understanding in their decision-making process. Grant them clarity to the fullest on all issues. Guide them through the channels of finance and expenditures. Give them the quality of excellence in planning both short and long term that allow them to do the right thing, the right way, and the right time. Help to guide our county in its continued wholesome and quality of life, growth, and development. Bless our county in the areas of education, arts, tourism, manufacturing, transportation, shipping ports, commercial, film industries, and continued growth in its infrastructure and citizenship achievements. Grant logic where needed and bless our commissioners to follow logic to its logical conclusion. And when this meeting comes to a close, grant those present with the same return to their intended destination. Amen.
Please face the flag. Salute.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Chair.
Thank you for being with us.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to note also that our minister doing the prayer this morning is also a Purple Heart recipient. Thank you for your service, sir.
Very good. Thank you so much for your service. Our next order of business is to excuse Chair Ravenbarck from the meeting today, so I will make a motion to excuse our chair from our meeting today.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we will move into our consent agenda. Are there any questions?
Move the consent agenda.
All in favor?
Aye.
Then we will now hear presentation of service awards and introduction of new employees to New Hanover County.
Good morning, Commissioners. Madam Vice Chair, thank you for the opportunity to recognize someone who's retiring after 16 outstanding years of service to our community. We're also going to recognize some employees that have reached significant milestones in their service, but we're also going to welcome some new folks that have joined the team since last we were together to recognize our outstanding team. So, thank you for the opportunity, and I'd like, if I could, to invite Regina Floyd Davis forward and her husband, if you don't mind, sir, coming forward. And Regina, if you'll do me the honor of standing next to me. I don't want to be bossy. How about you stand next to your wife? But I would like to read about your 16 years of service to our community. Regina Floyd Davis is retiring after 16 years of outstanding service to New Hanover County. She is concluding her distinguished career as a staff attorney for the Department of Social Services. Regina's legal career, which spans nearly four decades, reflects her deep dedication to public service. She has spent the majority of her career advocating for the protection of vulnerable children and families within New Hanover County and its surrounding regions. She joined New Hanover County following her tenure as an attorney advocate, where she represented children in abuse, neglect, and dependency court cases. Regina has seen things that we don't want to see and deal with, but it's folks like her that really do help keep our community safe, healthy, and secure. Known for her passion and commitment, Regina has built a reputation as a powerful and diligent advocate in the courtroom. Her meticulous preparation and presentation of cases have always met the highest standards. She's been the recipient of stellar awards from New Hanover County for her accountability and her stewardship. Regina has consistently upheld a high standard of professionalism in the courtroom and possesses exceptional legal acumen. Her focus and dedication to her casework have set a significant example of commitment and meticulous attention to detail in our community. If you would, please join me in recognizing Regina Floyd Davis for an outstanding career in public service, but most specifically, 16 years of incredible service to our community. Regina, thank you so much for what you've done. Congratulations. You can't be replaced, and we're not going to try. We just hope to find someone with the level of standard and professionalism that you've shown our community. Congratulations, and sir, thank you for letting your wife do this incredible work. Regina, again, thank you for an outstanding career. Thank you so very much. And Madam Vice Chair, we're going to recognize some folks that I said earlier have reached significant milestones in service to our community. And when I call your name, if you would please come forward, I'd like to be the first to shake your hand and then ask you to meet and talk with the board and tell them how much you love the job that you do.[511.62][511.62](Laughter) As we love having you do the jobs that you do. So, I'm going to begin first with five years this morning, and we're going to recognize Robert Burrows from Building Safety. Madam Vice Chair, also with five years of outstanding service, Morgan Combs, Community Justice Services. Commissioners, also with five years of service, Christine Donahue, Building Safety. Commissioners, we're going to have a final recognition with five years of outstanding service. Dale Flavorni, New Hanover County Sheriff's Office. Sir, thank you for what you do. And Madam Vice Chair, I got ahead of myself. We actually have another person that is receiving five years' recognition this morning, and it's Fallon Hutchins, Health and Human Services. Fallon, congratulations and thank you for what you do.[688.12][688.12](Applause) Madam Vice Chair, we're going to proceed to 10 years, and I double-checked that we have 10, three people that are going to receive 10 years of recognition. So, I can do the math quick. That's 30 years of combined service to New Hanover County, and that's not a statement to make lightly or for us to take lightly. These are folks that have seen a lot of things in the last 10 years, but they still are coming to work every day and doing the good work that you've charged us with. And so, the first person I'm going to recognize this morning is Bodine in Human Services. Commissioners, also with 10 years of outstanding service, Edward McHale, Building Safety. Commissioners, also with 10 years of outstanding service to New Hanover County, T.R. Nunley, Health and Human Services. So, Commissioners, we're going to move forward to 25 years of outstanding service to our community, and the folks that have been here for 10 years have really seen and done a lot, and we've asked things of them that were beyond probably what they thought they bargained for when they came. But 25 years and still coming to be a part of this organization every day and doing what you ask of us. And so, with 25 years of outstanding services, of service to New Hanover County, Nadine Sharma, Facilities Management. Nadine, thank you so much. Commissioners, 30 years is a milestone. This is when many people begin to think about, are they going to have a second career, and if so, what is it going to be? But some people are so committed to public service that after 30 years, they still want to be a part of this organization, doing really outstanding work for our community. And so, with that, I'm happy to recognize with 30 years of outstanding service to New Hanover County, Teresa Hewitt in the Finance Office. So, we do have another retiree.[1027.43][1027.43](Laughter) A lot of moving parts on a Monday morning. But before we recognize Lisa, whether it's five years or 30 years, I hope you know you have the best and the brightest doing the work on behalf of our community. I think all of our employees that have received service recognition deserve another round So, Lisa, come up. She was here on time. We just told her the wrong time that would in fact be on time. So, I'm going to read, now, wait till I get the punchline on this. We're going to read about Lisa Troth's service to New Hanover County that is 36 years in the making. So, Lisa, I am so thankful that you came this morning. What does the tiara say? Retired. And today, I believe, is actually Lisa's real last day. So, when she goes home, she's going to wake up tomorrow retired, but still wondering what it is that's going on at New Hanover County, I'll bet. Lisa, would you allow me to read about your career?
Let me put my glasses back on. Lisa's career began at the Department of Social Services as a food and nutrition eligibility specialist. Over the years, she advanced to positions such as food and nutrition supervisor and a social worker in various sectors, including work first family assistance, child protective services, and adult protective services, some of the most difficult work we ask to be done in our community. Lisa currently excels as a special assistant in-home social worker for Health and Human Services. Throughout her tenure, Lisa has earned numerous awards for innovation, for stewardship, and professionalism, highlighting her unwavering commitment to the community she served. Beyond her official duties, Lisa has been an avid volunteer actively participating in the United Way campaigns and the work on Wilmington Cleanup Program. Her dedication extends into extraordinary acts of service, such as ensuring care for elderly and disabled residents at a large apartment complex during a water outage and checking on numerous residents in times of need. Lisa's positive influence and client-centered approach have left a lasting mark on her colleagues, and I think more important, the many lives that she's touched. Her peers have said that Lisa's positivity and exceptional contributions to social services are exceptional, and her standards of excellence are something that we all should aspire to maintain. 36 years of outstanding service to our community and some of the most difficult and challenging work that anybody would be willing to do, and she's volunteered to do it every day for 36 years. Lisa, congratulations. I said it about Regina, we can't replace you. We're not even going to try. We just hope to find people that are as talented and committed to public service as are you.
Lisa, again, congratulations. Lisa Troth, Regina Floyd Davis, two outstanding employees that are retiring. They don't get any better than that. So, I'd like to introduce some new folks that have joined the team since we were last together. When I call your name, if you would, please stand up. We want to give you a proper welcome and thank you for coming to work with us. I share with the board almost every month, it's not easy to be hired into New Hanover County. We have very smart and talented people that work for us, but the differential of why you're selected and ultimately why you are successful is because you have a passion and a commitment for public service. This is not easy work, and we don't make it easy, but we give you the resources that you need. And so, thank you for coming to work with us, and we look forward to seeing each of you in five years, or sooner, but specifically five years to receive your service award. And so, the first person to recognize this morning is Sandra Centran Gosha in the museum, Cape Fear Museum. Sandra, thank you for coming to work with us, and good morning. Shawana Hubs in the North Carolina Sheriff's Office. Shawana, thank you. John Carr, Information Technology. John, good morning. I didn't get a chance to see you earlier. Thank you for joining the team. Tiffany Savage, the library. Tiffany, thank you. Pine Valley, Commissioner of Ball Field. Pine Valley Branch. Dee Smith, also with the library. Madam Vice Chair, Pleasure Island. And then finally, this morning, Michelle Sweeney, Community Justice Services. Thank you for coming to work with us. So, Commissioners, that concludes this morning, some of the best and the brightest. Couple retired, and we hate that, but we thank them for their service.
And while we're getting seated, if I might say, it's a true testament to the leadership here in New Hanover County, the teamwork in New Hanover County, and your willingness to serve the citizens, that you chose to spend your career here, your lifetime career in New Hanover County. So, thank you again, and thank you all for the leadership in this county. So, we will move into our next item, which will be consideration of a resolution recognizing Honor Flight of the Cape Fear Area, and we will have Ms. Ruth Smith do a presentation.
Good morning, Madam Vice Chair and members of the Commission. It's always a pleasure to be here with you and with the magnificent staff of New Hanover County. Really excited to be here again this year to tell you a little bit about the Honor Flight's third mission to Washington, D.C. As you all know, we take veterans who served prior to 1975 to Washington, D.C. for a Day of Honor and Remembrance. I'm pleased to tell you that the majority of our veterans this year, again, are from New Hanover County, as are the majority of our volunteer guardians who escort our veterans. This year, we will be taking our flight to Washington on Saturday, April the 20th, just a few days away. We'll be taking 75 veterans, including two who served during the World War II era, 12 Korean-era veterans, and 61 Vietnam-era veterans and Cold War veterans. And as you may remember, our Vietnam veterans in particular were not given the welcome home they deserved when they returned decades ago. So, we changed that, and on Saturday, we invite the whole community to come out and greet our veterans when we return to ILM at approximately, well, we're asking people to arrive around 8:45. We think we'll be entering a little after nine. Always the one thing we can't quite keep scheduled to a T. I want to be sure to say a special thank you to New Hanover County, particularly the Sheriff's Office, the Senior Resource Center, the ILM staff, just fabulous support we get from you all every year. And I'm also going to out Eric Peterson, who is traveling with us for the second year as our photographer on a pro bono basis. I think that's really all I have to say to you, other than to please be sure to come out and greet the veterans and to say thank you.
Ruth, thank you for being here, and what a wonderful event. If you haven't been to that, please show up. Please support our veterans. If we have any veterans in the room today, would you mind standing so we can applaud you? I know we have some here. Thank you so much for your service. We would not be the great country we are without your service. So, thank you so much. And I will now read the resolution.
Madam Chair, just want to say a few words. I want to thank all the veterans that are here. Ruth, thank you for taking the charge that was handed to you by Jason MacLeod and others that started the first Honor Flight. It was really cool seeing the first flight leave our community, and those World War II veterans and many, I mean, we've lost many of that generation in our community, and it's great that we've extended this now to others that have served, giving them honor where honor is due. And again, want to acknowledge again Mr. Sharif, who is also a Purple Heart recipient who served in the Vietnam War. Thank you for your service as well. I never miss the opportunity to honor you because I appreciate what you've done for our community.
Agreed you recruited him for next year's flight.
Awesome.
Awesome. Well, if there are no more comments, I'll read the resolution, Commissioners. Whereas the security of the United States relies on the patriotic women and men who put their personal lives on hold and placed themselves in harm's way to protect the freedoms on which this country was founded and that all citizens of the United States cherish. And whereas the Honor Flight Network is national nonprofit organization created by Oral Morse, a physician assistant and retired Air Force captain, and Jeff Miller, a small business owner and son of World War II veteran, and with the purpose of the honor of Americans' veterans for all sacrifices. And whereas through the Honor Flight Organization, over 250,000 World War II, Korean War, and Vietnam War veterans from across the United States have the opportunity to take an all-expense-paid trip to Washington, D.C. to visit the Military Service Memorials. And whereas many veterans have never visited Washington, D.C. and would not have been able to make this trip without the Honor Flight's support and resources. And whereas the Honor Flight of the Cape Fear Area is recently established, a hub of the national program led by local volunteers aimed at paying tribute to veterans in the Cape Fear Area and to educate members of the community about our local heroes. And whereas on April 20th, 2024, this amazing organization will provide World War II, Korean War, and Vietnam War veterans with a chance to fly out of Wilmington International Airport to Washington, D.C. and visit their memorials, giving participants a unique opportunity to pay, to both pay their respects for their fellow soldiers and to receive the time of reflection and celebration so they so richly deserve. And whereas North Carolina's veterans of World War II, Korean War, and Vietnam War embody the spirit of the service and willingness to find meaning in something greater than themselves, and it is fitting and proper that the outstanding accomplishments and sacrifices of these distinguished Americans be honored appropriately. Now, therefore, be it resolved that New Hanover County Board of Commissioners commends North Carolina veterans of World War II, Korean War, and Vietnam War, recognizes Honor Flight of the Cape Fear Area, and extends its deepest appreciation to those Flight of the Cape Fear Area, and extends its deepest appreciation to those who served wherever to make the ultimate sacrifice upon the altar of the freedom. Adopted this fifteenth day of April, twenty twenty-four by Vice Chair Leann Pierce. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, and we wish you a wonderful day on Saturday. We're looking forward to being there.
Thank you very much. I'd like to ask our veterans and members of our board and guardians to join us for the photo, if that's okay.
Great organization. Looking forward to being there this weekend and seeing you guys take off and then land again that afternoon. So our next item of business is Consideration of Fair Housing Month Proclamation, and it will be presented by Ms. Linda Thompson.
I think you have the proclamation.
Yep. Who has the fair housing?
I've got it. Linda, though, did you want to say some words before we get to the proclamation? Yes.
I have with me today two members of the Joint Community Relations Advisory Committee for the city and the county, and I have with me the Secretary, Dr. Kirsten Kynes, who is going to give remarks, along with Reverend Dr.
Sabrina Smallwood Moore.
And Dr. Kynes is going to give remarks. I apologize.
Oh, no problem. Good morning, Commissioners and county staff. On behalf of the Community Relations Advisory Committee, otherwise known as C-RAC, thank you for the opportunity to celebrate National Fair Housing Month and to remind our community of the importance of the protections that the Fair Housing Act provides to the residents of our county. The county and city governments wisely established C-RAC in two thousand and sixteen and charged us with addressing community issues involving prejudice or discrimination on the bases of race, national origin, creed or religion, age, gender, sexual orientation, disability, or medical condition. The purpose of C-RAC is tightly aligned with your mission to provide equitable opportunities and to ensure thriving for all residents of New Hanover County. We are here today to remind our county leadership, our fellow residents each other, and most importantly, our community's housing providers, that the Fair Housing Act prohibits discrimination in housing. As the resolution states, let us today and every day recommit ourselves to eliminating discrimination in housing by dismantling the barriers to housing choice and redoubling our efforts to ensure that every resident of our county can access the safety, dignity, and opportunity that affordable home of one's own can provide. The members of C-RAC stand ready to serve you in an advisory capacity and welcome you to connect with our committee by attending our monthly meetings or by reaching out to one of our members or Ms. Linda Thompson at any time. We thank you for your time this morning and all of your efforts on behalf of New Hanover County. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Yes. Thank you. We thank you. We appreciate that presentation.
Wonderful. I'd like now to read the resolution and proclamation. New Hanover County Board of Commissioners Fair Housing Month Proclamation. Whereas the Fair Housing Act enacted on April eleventh, nineteen sixty-eight, was adopted to prohibit discriminatory housing practices, undo racial segregation patterns, and provide equal access to housing opportunity for all. And whereas each year since the enactment of the National Fair Housing Law, the federal government has designated April as Fair Housing Month. And whereas in New Hanover County, the combined federal, state, and local civil rights laws protect people from housing discrimination based on race, color, religion, sex, national origin, disability, and familial status. And whereas economic progress and competitiveness are best served by promoting diverse, inclusive communities with equal access to good jobs, schools, healthcare, transportation, and housing. And whereas Fair Housing Month is an opportunity to reflect on our progress and to acknowledge the remaining challenges we have yet to overcome. And whereas the joint New Hanover County, City of Wilmington Community Relations Advisory Committee is tasked with addressing community issues involving prejudice or discrimination on the basis of race, national origin, creed or religion, age, gender, sexual orientation, disability, or medical condition, and has identified fair housing as a key issue needing to further attention in our community. And whereas New Hanover County acknowledges the passage of the Fair Housing Act and remains committed to eliminating discrimination in housing by dismantling the barriers to housing choice, acknowledging the intersection of health, economic, and housing inequities, dedicating resources to meaningful meaningfully address disparities, adopting policies that support this community's most vulnerable residents, measuring the impact of efforts, and creating more housing that welcomes and celebrates people of all abilities, races, cultures, and incomes. Now, therefore be it proclaimed by the New Hanover County Board of Commissioners that April, twenty twenty-four will be recognized as Fair Housing Month in New Hanover County. Adopted this fifteenth day of April, twenty twenty-four by Leann Pierce, Vice Chair, New Hanover County Commissioners. Congratulations.
I move approval of the proclamation. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can we have you up here for a moment?
Absolutely.
The next item on our agenda is Consideration of Child Abuse Prevention Proclamation. That will be presented by Tanya Jackson, HHS Social Services Director.
Good morning, Ms. Jackson. It's always great to see you, and I appreciate your diligent, hard work on behalf of our youth in particular in our community, having two small grandchildren. I can't imagine someone wanting to abuse a child, but you all see that on a regular basis, and your team is always deployed to rescue children who are in harm's way, find them stable, suitable housing, and then hopefully get their families to a situation where they can be reunited as well. With that, the other kind of Board of Commissioners Child Abuse Prevention Month Proclamation. Whereas in the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, Carousel Child Abuse Center, C-C-A-C, received four hundred and twelve child abuse case referrals, with a hundred and ninety-six of those referrals involving children in Hanover County. And whereas children are our most valuable members, as well as our most valuable resources, playing a crucial role in shaping the future of our communities. And whereas child sexual abuse, physical abuse, emotional abuse, and neglect are grave concerns affecting every community and can lead to the long-term psychological, emotional, and physical effects over individuals' lifetime, thereby influencing future generations. And whereas children who have access to safe adults, protective environments, and live in families with access to concrete economic and social supports are less likely to experience abuse and neglect. And whereas positive childhood experiences, PCEs, such as loving caregivers, safe and stable and nurturing relationships can help mitigate trauma and the negative impacts of adverse childhood experiences, ACEs, promoting the social, emotional, and developmental well-being of children. And whereas preventing child abuse and nurturing positive childhoods are achievable through partnerships between families, intervention, prevention, advocates, child welfare professionals, educational, health community, and faith-based organizations, businesses, law enforcement agencies, and federal, state, and local governments. And whereas to address the public health and safety challenges of child abuse, we must collaborate to change social norms, break down biases, and various focus on the needs of families and inspire education in action across all sectors of society. And whereas Hanover County is dedicated to preventing child abuse and acknowledges the importance of investing in primary prevention efforts, intervention services, and equitable, responsive, and effective systems that ensure all children and families are healthy and thriving. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the New Hanover County Board of Commissioners that April, twenty twenty-four, be recognized as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Hanover County. All citizens, elected leaders, community agencies, parent caregiver groups, medical facilities, and businesses are urged to increase their participation efforts to support increased awareness and promote education, build connections, and support families thereby preventing child abuse and enhancing the strength of the community. Adopted this fifteenth day of April, twenty twenty-four. Madam Vice Chair, I move approval of the proclamation as read.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson, you have the floor.
Good morning, um, everybody. I want to thank y'all so much for always being in such support of the Department of Social Services, Health and Human Services as a whole. Keeping these children safe in our community is about all of our partners, it's about the entire community. We could not do it without the support of the Commission, the support of the community partners. This resolution was actually put forth by the Carousel Center, who is one of our major partners in this, making sure that this happens. What I who I have with me is Ms. Amy Sheath, who's the Executive Director of the Carousel Center, and I would like to give her the opportunity to speak.
Good morning, Commissioners. I would like to just reiterate only one thing, and that is you have a lot of the spectrum of services here today that work together to ensure that that the village is thriving and helping wrap their arms around the children of New Hanover County. I would like to have those representatives of district attorney's offices, public defender's offices, juvenile, crime prevention, child protective services, victim advocacy, and any other child-serving organizations like Smart Start, youth-serving organizations, please stand, because this is our multidisciplinary team who are actually working on a monthly basis to do case review, to make sure that there are no gaps in services, and that every child that has to come through our doors to have a child medical evaluation, that we are really working diligently to ensure that whatever we need to do to keep families together, to make sure that that non-offending caregiver has whatever they need to be resilient. Oh, I forgot our Resiliency Task Force, Jevan A., please stand up. Make sure that we are working to ensure that our children and their adult caregivers and the rest of their family, regardless of whether we can hold a child abuser accountable, which sometimes our laws do not allow for us to do, because there's simply not enough evidence to do that. We still have children that have been abused, we still have children that have experienced trauma, and what we know about ACEs is that if we can intervene early and get them the treatment early, if we can go upstream and do primary prevention in our community, we know that it shows that we can do a great deal of strengthening our community so that we can tell perpetrators, this isn't the place for you. So thank you very much for this proclamation, and we will see you again next year.
Come forward for a photo, please.
Thank you so much for the very important work being done on behalf of our children. And you're exactly right when you say it takes a village, so it certainly does. So we will move into our next item, Consideration of Resilient and Thriving Communities Proclamation. It will be, let's see, presented by, did I skip one? Okay. Presented by Bodine.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for allowing us to be before you. I'm gonna turn it over to someone who is an incredible leader in herself. I have served on the task force, both as co-chair and on the steering committee. I served with co-chairs with Clifford Barnett, the Reverend Clifford Barnett, who serves on council here in the city, and then on the steering committee. And if I may, I'd like those that are on the steering committee to please stand that are in the audience, that have helped to do this leadership, and you can see by those that are standing, we have some really powerful influences that have helped to build resilience in this community. I also want to acknowledge someone who's in the room that is a support for our Executive Director, and it is clear from meeting her and getting to know her this morning that our Executive Director comes from the source of resilience, and that is her mother who is in this room this morning. So it was lovely to meet you this morning and to find out that our Executive Director's leadership comes from a beautiful source of power. So with that, I'm gonna give you to our Executive Director, Jevan A. Skiba, and all of the organizations that we represent through this task force.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you, Commissioners, for this opportunity to adopt this proclamation and elevating the necessary work of building a trauma-informed and resiliency-focused community. The Resiliency Task Force mission is to work together to prevent and respond to adverse experiences, trauma, and toxic stress through connection, education, and action. Currently, we have fifty-six partner organizations committed to raising awareness about ACEs, trauma, and their impact, providing training on how to build resilience, and implementing trauma-informed policies and procedures to support their staff and prevent re-traumatizing those they serve. As a task force of over seven hundred members, we are working diligently to support positive experiences in our community to counteract the impact of adversity. We do this work because we know that adversity is not destiny. Resilient and Thriving Communities Week is a time for all to center that knowledge and our mission and move forward toward the vision of New Hanover County being a compassionate and resilient community where everyone can thrive. According to the Healthy NC 2030 report from the North Carolina Institute of Medicine in partnership with North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services, negative impacts on the children experiencing ACEs can be mitigated by increasing trauma-informed practices in medical, educational, and other settings, and implementing strategies and programs to support families and children and foster resilience. Our multi-sector task force is doing just that. I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge those community advocates and leaders and task force members who might be present today, if you all might want to stand. Several of the other proclamations recently adopted exemplify the synergy of our collective efforts, and I am so privileged to be able to support our community in this way. Again, I thank the Board of Commissioners for seeing the deep value and community-changing power of the task force and for joining in local and statewide celebration of Resilient and Thriving Communities Week. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ma'am, thank you very much for that presentation. Madam Vice Chair, thank you for the opportunity to read this proclamation from the New Hanover County Board of Commissioners entitled, "2024 Resilient and Thriving Communities Week Proclamation."[1680.42] to support their staff and prevent re-traumatizing those they serve. As a task force of over seven hundred members, we are working diligently to support positive experiences in our community, to counteract the impact of adversity. We do this work because we know that adversity is not destiny. Resilient and Thriving Communities Week is a time for all to center that knowledge and our mission and move forward toward the vision of New Hanover County, being a compassionate and resilient community where everyone can thrive. According to the Healthy NC twenty thirty report from the North Carolina Institute of Medicine in partnership with North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services, negative impacts on the children experiencing ACES can be mitigated by increasing trauma informed practices in medical, educational and other settings, and implementing strategies and programs to support families and children and foster resilience. Our multi-sector task force is doing just that. I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge those community advocates and leaders um and task force members who might be present present today, if you all might want to stand. Several of the other proclamations recently adopted exemplify the synergy of our collective efforts. And I am so privileged to be able to support our community in this way. Again, I thank the Board of Commissioners for seeing the deep value and community changing power of the task force and for joining in local and statewide celebration of Resilient and Thriving Communities Week. Thank you.
Ma'am, thank you very much for that presentation. Madam Vice Chair, thank you for the opportunity to read this proclamation from the New Hanover County Board of Commissioners entitled Two Thousand Twenty Four Resilient and Thriving Communities Week Proclamation. It reads as follows. Whereas resilient and thriving communities are vital to the future health, success and prosperity of our community and state, ensuring a strong foundation for everyone at all ages and all stages of life. And whereas, the science is clear that resilience is built and that communities and systems play a key role in promoting safe, secure, nurturing environments for all. And whereas, adverse childhood and life experiences along with adverse community environments and climate events significantly impact the overall quality of life and well being of an entire community. And whereas, Healthy North Carolina twenty thirty focuses on improving health through key initiatives and better healthcare access, striving to overcome disparities, collective dedication is to drive progress, adapt to challenges and celebrate achievements as we advance toward a healthier North Carolina by twenty thirty. And whereas, it is our collective responsibility to collaborate in a nonpartisan manner to promote positive experiences and foster secure relations within supportive environments, thereby buffering against stress and adversity. It is equally crucial to support local resilience coalitions, collaboratives, task forces, task forces and initiatives across the state. And whereas, investing in policies, programs and strategies that address adversity and strengthen the community resilience is essential for the health of our community. And whereas, New Hanover County encourages collaboration among all individuals and sectors, both private and public and private alike, including early childhood through post-secondary education, faith based organizations, healthcare, justice, social service systems, businesses and elected leaders to help strengthen our communities. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the New Hanover County Board of Commissioners shall designate the week of April eighth through May fifth as Resilient and Thriving Communities Week, adopted this fifteenth day of April twenty twenty four, New Hanover County by Leanne Pierce, Vice Chair. I move the proclamation.
Second.
Honorable Speaker.
Aye.
Come up for a photo. Yeah, our next item of business will be Consideration of New Hanover County Juvenile Prevention Crime Prevention Council Funding Recommendation and Bylaws presented by the Honorable Judge J. H. Horvath, each second.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board. What a great day. So um, short agenda item today, there are two action items uh on behalf of the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. First is our funding plan for uh the coming fiscal year. Aside from a local match, these are state dollars that our Juvenile Crime Prevention Council looks at allocating to meet the needs of children uh that are adjudicated youth in our community, and then also some minor revisions to our bylaws. Um, we recognize in reviewing our bylaws, for example, that we couldn't communicate by email. Well, we we needed to update that, but we couldn't communicate by text, well, we needed to update that. Um, there's some statutory members of the JCPC, um, and designees are allowed, but our bylaws didn't allow, for example, Police Chief Donnie Williams to send a designee or Sheriff Ed McMahon to send a designee. Funding plan is significant. Uh, the it's in your uh materials uh for uh for today's meeting. One of the most significant things to note is that twenty percent match is required uh for JCPC funding. New Hanover County consistently consistently exceeds that match, uh primarily in the area of our youth empowerment services, um, which houses our psychological services for kids who are in my delinquency court uh and also our our community service and restitution program. And I want to stop there, tap pause and uh refer you back to an email you got from County Manager Chris Kudry, weekend before last about mental health services for kids and how desperate a need there is around the state and the country for those services. And I I texted him almost immediately and said, is it appropriate for me to say some good things that we've got going on in New Hanover County? Because there are some great things that we have going on in New Hanover County that don't exist in other places. Uh, I was here just a few weeks ago talking about gaps. I'm here today to talk about successes. Uh, our juvenile psychological services empowers me to have every child who comes to juvenile delinquency court to have whatever kind of mental health evaluation that that child may need, whether it's a comprehensive clinical assessment, which is a gateway to services, uh, one of our sex offender specific evaluations, a full psychological evaluations, uh in-house risk assessment. We can do that for every child. Statute requires that if the judge sees a need, then the judge is to reach out and get an evaluation. What if the judge is missing it? So we have an evaluation in every single case and make sure that every single child is matched to the services that they need. What a success. Uh, and that's through this funding with the significant match that that you authorize on a yearly basis. Couple that with our school-based mental health services that you have made a commitment to funding so that we have providers in our schools meeting the needs of children uh so that we can take out barriers such as transportation or uh parents who simply don't have the time because they're working two jobs to get their kids to the mental health services. But New Hanover County has maintained a commitment to meet those needs and that's significant. Uh, so I applaud you. Uh, those are things that are good, that are happening in New Hanover County, that are meeting the needs of our children. So with that, as Chair of the JCPC, I'd ask you to approve our funding plan and our amendments to our bylaws.
So moved.
Second. Honorable Speaker.
Aye.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Batman.
Thank you for being here, Judge. Thank you for all the good work you're doing in our community. So we will now give a Trillium Health Resources Annual Update Report from Ms. Cecilia Pierce from South Southern Regional Director of Trillium Health Resources.
Good morning, Madam Vice Chair and Commissioners. Thank you so much for having me in. Um, and we uh just also want to recognize Commissioners Apple for serving on our Southern Regional Advisory Board and also for serving on our governing board. We really appreciate the county's commitment to mental health and to partnering with Trillium, so thank you. Um, so I just wanted to come here today to share some updates on Medicaid managed care through Trillium, uh changes to our organization, um, and also some of the impacts that our services um have had on uh folks in the county. So just a little bit of an update, um, Trillium covers services and supports for people with Medicaid or who have uh no insurance or underinsured and have the most significant mental health, substance use and developmental disability and traumatic brain injury needs. Last year, uh, when we were a twenty eight county catchment area, we served approximately four forty three thousand individuals throughout our catchment area with those severe behavioral health needs, and you'll see a a breakdown um by uh disability population. The value of those services last year that were provided um were over six hundred and fifty million dollars. We serve about ten percent of the overall Medicaid population, but our members receive specialized services because of their high level of need. Um, and our health plan offers services that other Medicaid health plans do not offer to meet those unique needs of our members. And our goal is to offer as many community based services as possible to help our members stay stable and to avoid uh crisis services and other crisis systems utilization whenever possible. So a little bit about Medicaid transformation. Um, Medicaid transformation is the move to bring physical and behavioral health networks aligned under each health plan. This launched for Medicaid recipients with low to moderate behavioral health needs um in July of twenty twenty one. LMEs, local management entities, were supposed to transition to this model as well last July twenty twenty two, more than last July, uh, July first of twenty twenty two. Trillium had been on track to launch as a tailored plan, um, but other uh other areas of the state were not quite prepared. And so the launch of tailored plans was supposed to be a unified effort across all LME MCOs, and that was delayed a couple of times um by the state so that all LME MCOs would be ready to launch. Uh, this past legislative session, the North Carolina General General Assembly took action with their budget legislation to help move that tailored plan launch forward. So a couple of steps that they took um was to reduce the number of LME MCOs from six down to four or five. And they put that decision in the hands of DHHS Secretary Kinsley. Another step was also to increase the minimum population that LME MCOs uh would need to serve. Um, and so that was increased to one point five million, and that was really uh to help support the financial risk of covering both those behavioral health services and physical health needs. And they established a new launch date for tailored plans for July first of this year. So in order to follow through um with that legislation and to move away from having six LMEs, Secretary Kinsley uh issued a secretarial directive on November first of last year. And that directive included um Sand Hills MCO to dissolve and consolidate into East Point, and then for Trillium and East Point LME MCOs to consolidate down to one entity. Each MCO had to submit a consolidation plan and a consolidation agreement, uh and Trillium and East Point worked together to submit that. Um, the secretary approved that plan on December eighteenth, and we had until uh February first of this year to execute that plan and begin serving forty six counties as one consolidated LME MCO. So that was a very short period of time for three different organizations to come together um and continue serving uh individuals um under our um soon to be tailored plan model. It involved uh obviously eighteen counties joining Trillium. Trillium became the surviving entity due to that short period of time uh to bring us together. It involved onboarding nine hundred plus staff to Trillium's existing around five or six hundred staff. And we also incorporated either um new providers or existing providers with new contracts to the tune of around nine hundred um additional contracts with providers to expand our network into those additional eighteen counties. Our priorities during that time were really around ensuring the continuity of care for those members. Um, members in New Hanover County weren't necessarily impacted, but it changed the area of service that we have to offer. We were um, we obviously expanded our network, which uh expands opportunities for members in New Hanover County to access services. Um, what we really wanted to do is ensure that members in every county had the access to services that they did um prior to that consolidation, to ensure that staff coming from the legacy East Point and Sand Hills LME MCOs had a job with their same pay rate and their same benefits starting on day one, and also to ensure that our providers were in place and continued to receive payments for services so that we could um keep that that network, which is the backbone of how our members receive services. Uh, and so we went live as a consolidated entity on February first. We can continue to work through um some of the logistics of consolidation, but our members received services just as they did on January thirty first, so we're very pleased with that effort. So part of the consolidation for us um was to uh move from our twenty eight county three region governance model um to try to maintain that governance model um by incorporating new counties. And so we added uh essentially two additional regions. So as you can see, the orange area is our mid-state region, which includes um some of the legacy Sand Hills counties. Our blue region here is our newly realigned southern region, which starts um with New Hanover County, uh goes through Brunswick, Columbus, Bladen, Robinson, Scotland, Hope, Moore and Lee. We created a south central region, which includes um some of our legacy southern region Trillium counties, as well as some uh legacy East Point counties. We created a north central region, and we maintained our northern region with the addition of Warren County. So we've maintained our regional governance where uh each region has a regional advisory board that meets every other month and has a representative um from county commissioners, as well as a non-county representative. And each regional advisory board has a CFAC representative, which um allows us to continue to hear the member voice within our governance structure. Um, with the consolidation agreement, we added eleven members from the legacy East Point Board to our governing board. And so that is uh, that's part of the consolidation efforts that we've been going through, and you'll see um some of the additional population data um as part of that consolidation. So we've added quite a few new members to our plan. So these efforts really are meant to bring us forward and prepare us to begin operating as a tailored plan on July first. We uh just about a week and a half ago received approval from the state. All four LME MCOs received approval to go live as tailored plans. We met all of the readiness requirements, and so that will happen on July first. That really is incorporating whole person care, serving both the physical health and the behavioral health needs of our members. Um, and we will also add pharmacy benefits and non-emergency Medicaid transportation to that set of benefits that we offer through tailored plan. As I mentioned, most individuals are served uh through standard plans. So Trillium remains one of the um, one of four uh fully public Medicaid health plans in the state. Um, and we we really, part of the governance structure that I talked about really is that we are very much involved in our communities. We want to partner with our counties. We want to partner with um other organizations that we've heard about today, such as the Sheriff's Office, social services, health and human services, um so that we can serve those individuals who have high needs, um who need behavioral health care and other supports in the community, and we're involved in um many different uh many different committees and and groups in the county and county events uh in order to try to do that and continue that partnership. So there have been changes. Care management and tailored care management is the backbone to the tailored plan. Um, it allows us to support individuals on an ongoing basis in managing their physical and behavioral health and look at how those two sets of needs work together um to improve overall health for our members. We've added some specialty care teams as part of our tailored care management um department. Uh, and so one of those uh is really focused on individuals who are reentering from jail or prison, and that's our T-Star Team, our Trillium Support Transition and Reentry Team. We have a Rapid Access Care Coordination Team uh that serves um uh children who are in crisis, um either in an emergency department or a part of um child protective services care. Um, and we are developing a foster care management uh team that specifically works with our DSS um foster care staff uh to coordinate services for those individuals. Um, those are those cross-system uh efforts that require um more coordination and care to keep kids and adults out of crisis and maintain that continuity of care. We also have a population health team that is focusing on particular um high needs, uh health health conditions, um so high risk mothers, um looking at how to support smoking cessation in our members, um chronic condition management, and of course providing uh education and support around healthy eating and healthy lifestyles. Also wanted to provide some project updates um for things that we've been working with. Obviously, you know, we've had a great partnership with New Hanover County in launching the Healing Place. Um, they have been in operation for about a year now and are essentially uh full or close to full um with men and women who are um seeking detox, shelter and uh long-term peer-led recovery. We also have hosted a series of summits around particular um populations and health needs. We've uh offered uh an American African-American health summit, um a Latino health summit in New Bern, and this weekend we're hosting a Native American health summit in um Pembroke with a partnership with the Lumbee Tribe. Um, we've entered into value-based purchasing over the last few years to incentivize positive outcomes for particular services, especially those um those high cost uh services that keep people out of crisis. Um, and so we're going to be doing more of that over the coming years as part of our tailored plan efforts. We've hosted a series of reentry simulations to try to help the community understand what it's like for someone reentering from jail or prison, um some of the challenges and barriers they face in um successfully reentering and becoming stable, and we continue. And we continue to offer those reentry simulations with the, with the hope that we can build community effort and empathy around supporting that population. And our one-community team is, is our kind of outreach arm to make sure that we have a presence at community events and share information so that our members know that they can access care when they need it. Couple other project updates. CHESS Health is a recovery-based app. It helps folks in substance use recovery create and track on their recovery plan to find meetings, to access peer support, and receive reminders around their recovery plan. We offered family solutions grants. Covering New Hanover County, Easter Seals received a grant to help recruit more foster families and to grow kinship foster care supports in the community. That really is trying to help kids stay in their community when they enter the foster care system, rather than needing those higher levels of care that might lead them outside of the community. We distributed over 250 naloxone kits to both the Health Department and the Sheriff's Office. And also just wanted to highlight that Trillium members will be able to receive the Healthy Opportunities Pilot Services starting May 5th, May 1st of this year. And those services are designed to use Medicaid funding as a pilot to meet social health needs such as food and housing assistance. Those pilots have moved forward with standard plan members for a while, but tailored plan members have been ineligible up until now. So we're excited to see our members be able to access those additional supports to be able to help maintain stability in their community. Just a few numbers in terms of those that we have served in New Hanover County. In fiscal year 2223, we served a little bit over 7,000 unique individuals in New Hanover County through our plan. That's an unduplicated number. Those numbers, if you added them up, would, would exceed 7,351 because people often have co-occurring disorders such as mental health and substance use or intellectual and developmental disabilities and mental health conditions. And the total value of services that we provided to residents was over $100 million. So we appreciate the opportunity to continue to work with New Hanover County, to learn more about the needs of residents and to try to meet those needs. And I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Zabala.
Thank you. Cecilia, I can't thank you enough for this report, but for the work that you've done. You went through that quickly. And I just would like to highlight for a moment, for those of you who are listening carefully, that in, starting on November 1st of last year, in a 60-day period, the services offered by Trillium jumped from 28 counties to 46 counties. That represents almost half of the state of North Carolina. The number of people that are served jumped to almost a third of the entire state's population falling into Trillium's catchment bases. That all happened in a 60-day period over the Thanksgiving and Christmas holidays and New Year's. The amount of work that happened by yourself, Joy Frutrell, our executive director, and your entire team was enormous. You were tasked by Secretary Kinsley, you know, to make that happen, and you did. Trillium has led all the other LME MCOs across the state in being prepared for the tailored plans, which have to serve the most severe situations of behavior health and mental health in our entire state's population. And you did that all without missing a step and while providing services for all the people in New Hanover County and our original 28 counties, and now expanding without a hitch into 46 counties. That's just amazing. And especially when you layer on that it's a governmental operation that has multiple layers of bureaucracy on top of it. Tremendous amount of work, most of which will never go recognized or accredited. I just really wanted to put that spotlight on the amount of work that you and your entire team have done. Laying in also one other kind of personal thought, that your catchmenary, yours personal, Cecilia, you now have to drive literally hours in the Southern Regional Advisory Board area there just to get to those community bases that you're serving. So your personal time has now been doubled or even tripled just being on the road to make sure that you get out to that. And I know that through my own service there, that you do this. You are on the road literally sometimes seven days a week, making sure that people receive the services. It's hard to find another public servant like yourself and the entire Trillium team that does so much for our residents in, in North Carolina. And then I see here, this number here, kind of eye-popping, that here in New Hanover County, we received over $100 million in services. Again, while going through this massive expansion and making it all happen and as we head towards the actual trigger date of July 1st for our tailored plans. You've just done incredible work, and I'm really appreciative and this entire commission and all the residents of New Hanover County are there. That's all the good news. The other, in just having the unique situation of being on both the Southern Regional Advisory Board and the governing board, I recognize how difficult it is sometimes if you're a parent or a caregiver of a person who needs these services. You're in the middle of sometimes a traumatic situation, daily, sometimes hourly. And how do I access the good work that Trillium is doing? It's a question that I bring up a lot, and I know, to your chagrin sometimes in all of our meetings, but it's a really important one for those who are listening here in New Hanover County. Is there a website or a phone number so that if you have a child, if you have an adult, if you have someone in your life that needs these services, can you give us a direct path on how somebody in the Trillium world can reach out to you?
So our access to care number, which members and community members can access with questions and to receive services and to initiate services and coverage And our website, which will also take you to our benefit plans, to community trainings and other opportunities to connect with Trillium, is trilliamhealthresources.org. So thank you. I realize that wasn't in the presentation, but it's really important for people to know how to access care. So I appreciate it.
Cecilia, I know we also are fortunate enough here in New Hanover County to have one of your main offices here on Shipyard Boulevard, too. Is that available for people to come and bang on the door and say, "Help"?
So we don't offer direct services out of that office. That's more of an administrative office, and some of our care management team work out of that office. So they may meet with members there. But members can access care through our provider network just by walking in. So we have a no-wrong-door approach where if you need services through an organization like Easter Seals, or Pride, or Coastal Horizons, or RHA, you can walk in the door, schedule, or sometimes those providers have assessment hours daily to receive an assessment, to meet with a clinician, and to access care through our provider network directly.
Thank you. I just want to reemphasize for the 10th time, if you are out there and you have a child or an adult that needs help, and you are overwhelmed and you don't know where to turn to next, Trillium is here, and they can provide the services. Please, jump online, go to Trillium or the phone number that Cecilia just, just gave it here. It's here in New Hanover County and can help. Somebody's trying to call right now, I think Cecilia's.
Quite possibly.
There you go. Thank you. I'll, I'll stop there, and thank you for your report. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Vice Chair. Cecilia, thank you for being here today. Several months ago, I asked our county manager and our management team to look at doing something similar to The Healing Place, and thank you for your partnership there for those that have mental health disorders, recognizing there's a great need for folks to have housing and services that extend beyond a week or two, whereas all you get pretty much in the behavioral health hospital is typically two weeks, and then you're pretty much out and trying to figure out next steps. And I think some folks need more than that. Not looking for the traditional asylums and those kind of things, but some type of well-care, well-being where folks can get long-term care that they need with housing and meals and those things. And I'm understanding that there may be one of those that's trying to get established somewhere in our state. What are your thoughts on us making something like that happen here in our community?
So our team is actually looking at some different models for folks who need sort of a transitional setting, who have severe mental health concerns and need that support around their behavioral health services and also some housing stability to get that under their feet. So our team is looking at some different models for that, and we hope to come back to the county in the next month or so with, with some options that might work for the county and the residents here.
I assume we'll need to acquire some land. What I see is something similar to The Healing Place that will provide that stability for folks. You know, acute care is okay, but again, a week or two, and that's all you get. And that really, what I've seen, doesn't really solve the problem. And the fact we have so many people that are at our hospital in the emergency room, behind closed doors, behind locked doors, because there are not adequate facilities for them to go to. And typically, when we transport someone from our community to some other place, it's the Sheriff's Department doing that. And they're putting folks in the back of a van, typically with limited clothing, a gown on, and not much more than that, which to me is not good.
It's less than ideal, for sure. We do have some existing programs. We have Project Transition, which combines a kind of psychosocial rehab, partial hospitalization, mental health service model with some housing. So that is an existing project that's available here. It's only available to folks who have Medicaid, so that is a limitation in that service. And we also work with individuals who meet the level of care for an adult care home, but can really live independently with some community-based supports through our Transitions to Community Living program. It is not a program that's available to everyone because there are criteria to be met around that. Those are some existing supports available. But again, we are very excited to work with the county on some other models and options that may require land or may be able to utilize existing facilities to make more of a transitional support model for individuals with mental health happen here.
I guess you'll probably need to find a way to change the rules, the bylaws, to allow folks with health insurance as well to be accommodated. Not just those that have Medicaid, but you know, there are other folks that have the ability to pay in our community, just don't have a place for people to go. And when we're sending people to Winston-Salem, to Raleigh, and points beyond, it can be, create a burden on families trying to visit their loved ones, number one, and you know, provide that family support that, that I think is needed and necessary as well, so.
That's one of those pieces to developing that model that we'd have to work through.
Appreciate you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you for being here. Great information. I think what you gave us is exactly what we need to know and how to access those services. And that's what a lot of folks don't know. And if I just might say to Commissioners Apple, thank you for your continued service with this, with this organization. It's very important that we get involved, and a lot of need for this and a lot of unknowns for folks out there. So thank you for the update.
Yeah, thank you.
Now we will have a consideration of a resolution to join the World Health Organization and the AARP Network of Age-Friendly Communities in letter of support presented by Ms. Amber Smith, New Hanover County Senior Resource Center Director.
Good morning. Thank you, Madam Vice Chair and Commissioners, for allowing me. And also wanted to invite Rosa Lee Colarko, who is with the Associate State Director of the AARP North Carolina Coastal Region. So today I bring forth a presentation for your consideration of resolution for us to apply, to join, to be part of the AARP Network of Age-Friendly Communities. So the Network of Age-Friendly Communities in 2006, in response to preparing for a growing older adult population, the World Health Organization, which is part of the global network of age-friendly cities and communities, was established. And this was really to bring together different cities, communities, countries even, who are committed to becoming more age-friendly, really to facilitate the exchange of different information, resources, and frankly, best practices. And 2012, AARP became the United States affiliate of the World Health Organization of age-friendly networks, really to focus on the United States and really to help also United States cities to also prepare for their own growing older adult population. So what does age-friendly mean? What does this look like? So age-friendly are really livable communities. And you're going to hear me use that terminology going back and forth between age-friendly and livable communities. It really focuses on eight different domains within a community. You can see here, there are housing, outdoor spaces and buildings, transportation, community and information, civic participation and employment, respect and social inclusion, health services and community support, and of course, social participation. Age-friendly really truly means a livable for all people. And while age-friendly, it focuses on older adults, we know what's good for older adults is good for everyone. When we look at individuals who are, who might have a disability or even a parent, for instance, that is pushing a stroller along a sidewalk. So things like that of looking at all ages, all stages in our community. To be able to be affiliate of the age-friendly network, the first step is coming to you, coming to our elected leadership, really to, for you to make the commitment to working towards making our community the best place for New Hanover County. That is age-friendly, that is livable for all ages. Two is, once we get the authorization to apply and, and we're accepted into the network, is really to look at our action plans. And we'll talk further about this later in the presentation, but we already do have one significant action plan through our Master Aging Plan. So we're already a little bit ahead of the game. But developing that action plan, and it included residents' input, ongoing resident input, and really making sure that that can, that dialogue, it's diverse and it's, and it's engaging all members of our community. And then with that is really initiating those action plans, looking at them as multi-sector plans, not just one particular plan, but opportunities of how we can include this language in several different plans that New Hanover County already has, or opportunities to include this language in future plans such as comprehensive land use plans, parks plans, future master aging plans. So the, the network itself, it's, it's large. There's currently at least 850 members. And I, and when I say at least 850 members, because there's new entities that are joining the network every day. There's 236 counties in North, in the United States that have already joined, and 11 states. Particularly here in, in North Carolina, on May the 2nd, 2023, the governor signed an executive order for North Carolina to become an age-friendly state. And that is significant. And part of that is, the governor instructed the Division of Aging and Adult Services, Health and Human Services, to really look at a multi-sector plan that includes all ages, all stages. Here in North Carolina, we already have nine counties that have already joined. And you can see, they're pretty large counties, for the most part, that have already, that have already joined. So why this is important, particularly to New Hanover County, we're seeing a population shift. That's not a surprise. This is something that is going to continue to increase of our older adult population shift. And it's important to look at the reasons of why. We've got ninth, North Carolina is ninth in total population. It's ninth in population of those that are 65 and older. And really, we're kind of neck and neck with Michigan. I won't be surprised in the next year or two years, we're going to kind of even go above Michigan on that because why would you want to live in Michigan, just live in North Carolina? So in North Carolina, these are important numbers to really look at. When we talk about a shift in demographics of a growing older adult population, just two years ago, one in six individuals were 65 and older. Next year is pretty Next year, it's projected that one in five individuals are 65 and older. In less than 20 years, it's going to be a 40% increase in change in population of our older adults that are 65 and older. And then the, the last graph is really important to take a really close look at in North Carolina. You can see in the next 20 years, particularly look at those that are 85 plus. We know that as individuals age, there's probably more resources that are going to be needed, and, and looking at our community as a whole. In migration of people 60 plus, of the largest counties in North Carolina, New Hanover County is right there. And the reason for that, I already said, it's a, New Hanover County, it's a beautiful place. Who wouldn't want to come live here, take advantage of not only the environment, but the governance that we provide here in New Hanover County? And this is not only individuals, we see it at the Senior Resource Center every day, people coming in and visiting saying, hey, I want to learn more about your services and what you offer, and we're seeing a lot of individuals that are moving not only from state to state, but also within different counties in, in North Carolina, but also from abroad as well. So, let's look at New Hanover County specifically. This is probably information that you're more interested, what's happening here of our older adult population. Well, we already have more residents 60 and older than zero to 17. That's going to continue to increase. So, by 2042, it is expected that less than one out of every four individuals will be 60 plus. That's a huge shift in demographics. If you look at the, the red circle there, that's important to pay attention to in less than 20 years, the largest change in demographics are those that are going to be 60 and older. We're a little bit ahead of what North Carolina's ranking is, just slightly ahead. So, AARP puts out a livable score for every place throughout the United States. And where they come up with this livable score is they look at different federal, state, local policies, they look at the environment, the offerings that are there. In New Hanover County currently, their livable score is 52, which is slightly above the average. Average is 50. We've got some opportunities to make some improvements in some of the categories. We're doing really well in some of the categories. So, the benefits of joining the network, it's, it's to access the global network of communities and experts. It accesses best practices, planning models, initiatives. If you go back and look at that livable score, it may mean that, hey, there may be a community that's similar to ours, that is doing phenomenal in transportation, let's look and see what they're doing. What practices, what models are they doing, and, and that sharing of information? It increases opportunities for partnerships within our community. Again, this goes back to, this is not just a one plan, this is not just a master aging plan, but it's looking at opportunities of partnering with other entities, not only in New Hanover County, but also partnerships with nonprofits, the city of Wilmington, the hospital, the university. It also, this is pretty significant, some grant opportunities with joining the network. And again, goes back to that multi-sector planning. So, the next steps and the process, processes for joining is presenting to you here today, allowing us to have a resolution adopted and a letter submitted to AARP Network of Age Friendly Communities. Once we submit that application, if we're accepted into that network, the next step is submitting our current master aging plan, which was adopted in 2021, and we'll go through 2026. We already have identified community needs, we've already identified actionable items within that plan, and we have a year to do so. We will continue as we're already doing, tracking the successes, the progress of that, the opportunities to increase, making efforts and strides in that master aging plan. And then that's going to be here, from year one through years five. What's important is asking now, why, why join this network when we already have a master aging plan? The, the, the big thing is what we've already talked about, it gives us more opportunities to work with others, to be part of this global network, but also it helps us in planning for the next master aging plan, which we're going to start planning for that in 2025, because we want to be able to present to you the next plan by 2026, when the, when the first plan ends. But also working with other partners, such as planning and land, land use, such as I said, parks, other opportunities to add this age-friendly network or livable communities networks into those other plans as well. So, I appreciate your time again. I just wanted to kind of leave with you a snapshot of some of the members in our network that live here, that rely on services that we provide in New Hanover County, whether that's directly through the Senior Resource Center or other wonderful services that we offer, and I appreciate that your, your time and your ongoing support.
Thank you. Any comments, Commissioners, questions?
Yes, question. What obligations will New Hanover County have to WHO, AARP in connection with this? I understand that there are benefits that are flowing to us, but what obligations will we have to these organizations?
Yep, so there is no fee associated with, with joining, and really truly, the only obligation is looking at your plans, your initiatives, your policies, and making your communities or those plans, including those eight domains.
So, I can just envision a scenario where perhaps our preferences for a master aging plan may not align with WHO. What happens in that situation?
Every, I mean, community is going to be different, so there's not a one-size-fits-all as far as, you know, every plan is not going to look the same. So, that's going to be the important thing, is part, part of the World Health Organization or the AARP Network of Age Friendly Communities, it's really designed to look at your community, your needs. So, I don't anticipate that there would be anything that our current plan, or really even future plans, because we're looking at livable communities. That's what we're charged with in New Hanover County, is making our community livable for all.
So, I guess just the issue that I have here potentially is, this board is the policy center for New Hanover County. I do not want to sublimate the authority of New Hanover County to an organization like WHO, happy to receive their recommendations, but at the end of the day, we have to be able to make our own determinations about what's best for New Hanover County, and I want to make sure that we're not agreeing to anything other than that.
No, that you're, you are 100% correct. These are our plans, and if for whatever reason, the future plans, we can withdraw from the network.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Sir?
Thank you. Commissioner Scalise, I think that what was embedded in Amber's wonderful report, and thank you, was the fact that we are ahead of the curve with our master aging plan, and I think that to maybe allay some of your fears, is that other communities will be looking at our master aging plan as the template to use to get on board of what is happening not only here in New Hanover County, but across the entire United States. We have an aging population. We just happen to be, not just happen to be, through good, hard work, we're ahead of the curve by a long shot here, and we are leaders within this industry, I don't know, or this movement here, which I, I think is just terrific, and it really reflects on all the work that you've been doing, Amber, and I, I really appreciate that. And with that, I'd like to move that we adopt the resolution and let you get to submitting the application.
Second.
Motion on the floor, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much for the presentation and having the foresight to see that we have a growing aging population.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we will now have a consideration of request to purchase the Wrightsboro Fire Station, Chief Donnie Hall.
We're bringing before you this morning consideration to purchase the Wrightsboro Volunteer Fire Department facility at 3515 North Carr Avenue. We were approached in March from the corporation that owns the building with an interest to sell the property, and so we're bringing it forward for consideration. The sale price is $500,000, and we are currently in our due diligence process and reviewing all those, and we're asking for approval to purchase and be able to close on that property. Any questions?
As discussed at our agenda review on Thursday, this is an excellent opportunity that we have available, and I think that this is something we absolutely need to move forward with. So moved.
Second, also just a quick comment, thank you, Donnie, for kind of leading this effort to identify the situation and work with the Wrightsboro Fire Station, you know, current owners to make this happen and to bring this into our family, and to provide, you know, the level and standards that, that we provide as the county. So, thank you very much for your good work on this. With that, as a second.
Any more comments or questions?
Before we vote, I just want to say thank you for having that, that vision, because I do believe that New Hanover County should own our fire stations for the future of our citizens and their safety and a place to operate out of. So, with that, we'll take a motion on the floor, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
We will now have a public hearing, public hearing in consideration of economic development grant pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 158-7.1. We will now open a public hearing to receive comments and appropriations and expenses for the economic development and an economic incentive grant agreement. The source of the funding for the agreement will be the general fund of the county. The purposes of the economic development incentive grant agreements are to increase the population, taxable property, agricultural industries, employment, industrial output, and business prospects for New Hanover County. The economic development payments being discussed relate to Wilmington Trade Center in the total amount of $3,383,112, with no more than $1,127,704 payable in any one fiscal year through June 30th, 2031. And I will make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and we will now hear from Mr. Scott South.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for having us today. On behalf of Wilmington Business Development, your contractual economic development partner, I am pleased to be here to bring before you a jobs, tax base, and an investment opportunity. But before I get into the details, I'd like to especially recognize County Manager Chris Coudray, Lisa Wortsbacher, and Eric Credle on your team, who have just done an incredible job as we've worked through this, this process. Their coordination and their guidance is admirable and absolutely necessary, so thank you. As you all know, product development initiatives have been a big part of what we've been involved in, in recent years, and, and I think it absolutely has been essential to the success that our region has had, proactively getting out and getting the essential infrastructure and the utilities in place, so that we can have, so that we're not selling out of the back of an empty wagon, so that we have product that we can show, that's ready to occupy. In order to be considered for major economic investment, we must be able to show evidence of fully infrastructureed sites with buildings that are constructed to today's modern standards. We've seen it time and time again, when we have a prepared site and are building, we can win. From US Highway 421 corridor, which many of you have been involved in here recently, all the way to Blue Clay Road, Blue Clay Business Park, where, where we have product, we have an opportunity to compete for new jobs and new investment. The scale of the projects that are coming to the state of North Carolina are getting larger and more demanding, and it's likely to increase. We're getting exposure to a, to a lot of opportunities with our proactive marketing efforts, and we're really excited about what that can mean. Locally, just in very recent times, we've seen over half millions square foot positions taken down, like Santee America near the state ports. Epsom Island is looking at doing a facility on Highway 74 in our neighboring Brunswick County. We're on the, we're on the screen for other large-scale opportunities that will occupy many, many thousand-plus square feet and over a million square feet. So, th- these are legitimate situations, and we have to be ready to compete for those. And until Holly Shelter Business Park, with, which you all have been very involved in, is scheduled for a late 2025, early 26 infrastructure, we're limited in our large contiguous land positions in New Hanover County. Pender Commerce Park on US Highway 421 is almost at full capacity. Currently, as of today, we have over a million square feet, we have over a thousand jobs and significant investment in that park, it's almost empty. So, we're going to need a lot more opportunities to sell. We believe Wilmington Trade Center, with a team in the market that have a history of performance, Edgewater Ventures and McKinley Building, we have Ken Doll here with us today, Principal McKinley Builders and Andrew Cook, as well as Mike Masardo with Edgewater Ventures. We think they have the opportunity and are willing to invest to bring major tax base and job opportunities to New Hanover County. This development team bought 187 acres last year on US Highway 421 in a major expansion of one of their existing industrial projects, which, which you can see there on your screen. The acquisition expands Wilmington Trade Center to 212 total acres and is master planned to provide up to 3.3 million square feet of Class A industrial facilities. The park will be one of the largest of its kind in the state of North Carolina and is designed to accommodate industrial users up to 1 million square feet. At Wilmington Trade Center, they have already developed two buildings, which you all are familiar with, totaling 315,000 square feet on the original 25-acre parcel that they acquired in 2021. These facilities are 85% leased to four tenants, including Paper Foam, Coastal Carriers, GE Vernova, and the New Hanover County Emergency Services. They plan now to break ground on Building 3, which will add another 100,000 square feet to the growing portfolio. For Wilmington Business Development, these buildings and the planned space on the newly-acquired land is a recruitment tool. It is a place for us to bring companies from the outside in, as well as the, those existing industries that are currently here in our region that need to grow and expand. Wilmington Trade Center is strategically positioned on Highway 421, near the I-140 connector, providing direct, uninterrupted access to the entire Wilmington market, as well as to I-40 to Raleigh and beyond, I-74 to Charlotte and beyond, and Highway 17 running the entire coastal corridor. Park provides immediate access to downtown Wilmington, less than seven-minute drive, 4.2 miles, Wilmington International Airport, which is 6.7 miles from the site, and the Port of Wilmington, which is 8.7 miles from the site. Investment in this project allows the development team to continue to build speculative buildings that are taxable to the county and give us the opportunity to bring new jobs and new investment to our region. It also allows us to market shovel-ready sites as opportunities for these many builder suits that we are seeing. This is an extension of New Hanover County, Wilmington Business Development, and the port of Wilmington's marketing efforts to attract world-class users to our market. We are asking and advocating for you to consider financially supporting what we call Project Trade, with a performance-based incentive package of over $3.3 million over the next several years, to support infrastructure investment, direct capital investment, and the creation of new full-time equivalent employees. The investment commitment from the client associated with this specific project is plus 80 million, and the creation of over 1,500 new jobs with the park at full build-out. Given our experience, we believe that these numbers are reasonable but conservative. The opportunity that this, that this product will bring for us to continue to diversify the economy, which we believe is probably... which we believe is probably one of the most important aspects of the Wilmington economy, is the diverse types of offerings we have, from corporate headquarters, research and development, manufacturing, distribution. This will add a lot of opportunity for us to pursue things that are going to be what we believe to be changing transformationally for New Hanover County. I want to pause there and ask if there are any questions, certainly feel free to ask, but have Eric Cradle come up and detail the specifics of the incentive package. I thank you for your time and your consideration and your continued support of our economic development efforts. It's a pleasure to see each and every one of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Scott? Eric?
Thank you Scott for providing an overview of this exciting project. Staff agrees with the prospects of this park being an excellent way to attract new businesses and investment to the Highway four-twenty-one business corridor. This type of park also seems to line up well with what the County Commission had in mind when it led an effort to bring utilities to this corridor six years ago. In developing today's proposed incentives, in addition to Scott and Cliff Pyron of the WBD, county staff worked with representatives from the principals of this project, including Chris Norville and Mike Masardo of Edgewater Ventures, and Ken Doll and Andrew Cook with McKinley Building Corporation. Mike, Ken, and Andrew are with us here today. This diagram, the diagram on the screen now shows a model of the current vision of this park. As Scott noted, Buildings One and Two, which front Highway twenty-one, are already built and in use. Building Three is an imminent start for construction. The incentive agreement today being considered is not tied to those three buildings, instead it's tied to the ten buildings in the back. Today's incentive agreement would provide the support for the developers to build out the infrastructure that is necessary for the construction of the additional ten buildings in the back of the park, as well as support for the construction of those buildings. As shown on the right side of the screen, the size of the buildings ranges from eighty-four thousand square feet all the way to potentially one million square feet. The business plan for this industrial park is to construct a shell building in anticipation of being able to lease or sell the building space soon after completion, and then to replicate that process for the remainder of the park. It's intended that the lessies or buyers of the building will further invest in the buildings and bring equipment and jobs to the facility. The infrastructure needed for the park build-out, as shown on the screen, includes the orange road, utilities alongside the road to the back of the park, a water tank for fire purposes, a traffic light on Highway four-twenty-one, and the blue stormwater ponds that are located in the back. With the infrastructure fully in place, the development of the park becomes attractive to potential investors because of the speed to market. Having what is essentially a pad-ready site in place cuts many months, if not more than a year, from being ready for use. At the end of the project, this is what is envisioned, a commercial business park with thirteen industrial buildings with potential for four hundred million dollars of direct investment associated with the cost to construct the building and more than two thousand jobs. In discussion with the principals of Wilmington Trade Center, a project budget for the infrastructure cost was reviewed. As you can see here, the total cost of this infrastructure is estimated at eight-point-eight-five million. Staff identified the three highlighted items on the budget that are consistent with the types of infrastructure that the county has precedent for funding, including utilities, fire protection, and a lift station for wastewater. The sum of those budget items totals three million, three hundred eighty-three thousand, one hundred and twelve dollars, and this formed the basis in developing an incentive structure which is tied to the infrastructure build-out, direct investment and job creation, each of which I'll discuss more in more detail in a moment. With the full park build-out likely being ten years or more, an incentive structure was developed that was tied to a shorter-term time horizon. First, it was agreed that it was advantageous for the development of the rest of the park to begin as soon as possible. Second, because complete build-out of the infrastructure unlocks the full potential of the park, that was deemed a critical component to this incentive. Next, we wanted to incent direct investment in building construction and the resulting job creation that could realistically be developed in a manner consistent with the owner's business model in a five-to-seven-year timeframe. It was determined that the construction of Buildings Four, Five, Six, and Seven met this criteria, and thus the estimated cost of eighty-two million dollars to construct those four buildings became the basis for the direct investment piece of the incentive. The third piece of the incentive is tied to the creation of at least fifteen hundred jobs as a result of the direct investment from the companies that move into the park. While more than two thousand jobs are expected upon full build-out of the park, the target of fifteen hundred jobs was established based on the five-to-seven-year timeframe that I just noted. From a financial perspective, approximately four hundred and thirty thousand dollars in annual property taxes would result from the eighty-two million dollars in direct investment at the tax rate applicable to the unincorporated county. That results in a payback from the total incentive of three-point-four million of seven-point-nine years. If you include the property taxes from all ten buildings that are anticipated to eventually become part of the site, the payback drops to one-point-seven years. This slide shows more detail regarding the structure of the incentive. As just noted, one-third of the total incentive, which amounts to one million, one twenty-seven, seven oh four, is tied to each of the three prongs of the incentive. As it relates to building out the infrastructure, the county would match each seven dollars and eighty-five cents of Wilmington Trade Center cost with one dollar of county incentive. The county's incentive of one-point-one million, when combined with the seven-point-eight-five million dollar investment from the owners of Wilmington Trade Center, would fund the full expected cost of the infrastructure. The performance period for this piece of the incentives is July first, two thousand and twenty-four, to December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-six. As it relates to direct investment, as I noted a moment ago, the estimated cost to construct Buildings Four through Seven is eighty-two million dollars, which is the basis for the next one-third of the incentive. The performance period for this piece of the incentive is July twenty-six to June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one, and will be determined based on property tax values. If Wilmington Trade Center sells a building they have constructed to a third party, they will continue to be able to include the direct investment value in their performance measurement, but any subsequent investment made by a third-party buyer would not count towards that direct investment target. The third piece of the incentive is tied to the creation of fifteen hundred jobs with the same performance period as for the direct investment. It is expected that these jobs will be related to third-party companies that buy or lease the constructed buildings. The number of jobs will be determined based on a certificate from Wilmington Trade Center. Finally, to help manage the county budget, the county, the maximum amount payable in any single year is one-third of the total incentive. With that, staff, WBD, and the principals of Wilmington Trade Center are here, available for any questions.
Any questions?
I don't have any questions. I'll hold my comments for whenever we're ready for those.
Okay, we will hear from Andrew Cook.
I think he's available for questions, but doesn't have prepared comments.
Mr. Cook and Masardo, do you folks have any questions for them? I'll make a motion to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Second.
Sorry, go ahead.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Discussion?
Yes, Madam Vice Chair, I just want to make a quick note that New Hanover County is fortunate to be able to have robust services that it offers to its community. I'm glad that we have the ability to do that. But our robust services are contingent upon us having a strong tax base. They're contingent upon us having a strong economy. This is the sort of investment into infrastructure and jobs and increasing our tax base that will have an excellent return on investment. This is the sort of thing that I'm very glad that we're doing. I am grateful to the folks who are advancing this particular cause, bringing jobs to this community, increasing our tax base. Thank you for your investment, large, hundreds of millions of dollars. We're going to see some excellent results as a consequence of this investment that we're making here today. I'm very pleased to be in the position to talk about it in this way, and I'm ready to make a motion at the appropriate moment. Madam Vice Chair.
Madam Vice Chair.
Mr. Barfield.
Scott Satterfield. You just keep doing it, right? Making sure that the right project's coming for our board at the right time. It was great to have a visionary board that recognized the need for growth to take place on Highway four-twenty-one. I think our community came together several years ago and authored the Gartner Report and looked at what would it take to grow the economy here, and recognizing that a site is where land has water, sewer, and electricity to it, not just vacant land. And the ability to have those utilities is key and important to attracting businesses to our community. Without that, you just have land for sale, and you help lead us down the road of making sure that we had the right infrastructure in place of four-twenty-one. And now to see, you know, that come to fruition is really remarkable. There's a phrase, "If you build it, they will come," and we build it and they're coming. And now looking forward to what's happening in Blue Clay Road, as well as the City Berry Road, or the Castle, I'm sorry, the Castle Plain area, with growth that's going to take place there as well and bringing more jobs to our community. But I appreciate you and your team for, you know, bringing projects to us that make sense. You know, I look back on Live Oak Bank, when we had a first-round breaking there, the incentives that were offered there. I look back at Castle Branch, and the citizens that were offered there, Fort Front Industries, General Electric, when they expanded their nuclear headquarters into our community. All those things have made the quality of life here in our community better because we're increasing our tax base, we're bringing more jobs to our community. Look at National Gypsum, and they're paying, I guess, close to sixty thousand dollars a year plus benefits. Those things mean something to our community when it comes to quality jobs coming here, and as we often talk about livable wages, and those jobs are bringing more than that to our community. And so with that, Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the economic development appropriations and expenditures based on the findings that are, the appropriations and expenditures will increase the population, taxable property, agricultural industries, employment, industrial output, or business products of the county, and approve the associated incentive agreement.
Second.
Madam Chair, Vice Chair.
Commissioner Satt.
Just one quick comment. I know that most of the people who are sitting here too, including you Scott, I remember well that seven years ago, when we first started talking about, you know, bringing that water and sewer, and at that point, unbelievably, it was somewhat controversial. We look back at that, and it just seems almost quite, it was such a no-brainer. And I remember some of the discussion back then was, "Oh, my goodness, it'll be years and years, decades before we can get things going." And I know it was through your encouragement, and WBD said, "No, no, no. If we get that water and sewer up there, it's going to happen." And look at now, it just seems like a heartbeat it's happened here, and the kind of explosion that we're seeing, and thanks to Ken Doll and Andrew for, you know, bringing this major building opportunity, you know, forward to us to make sure that it's happening. It's just really exciting and just means so many positive things to hear in New Hanover County. I wanted to thank you for bringing this forward and to remind the public that's listening that all of these incentives that we have here are all tied to specific marker points of investment first, before there's any incentive that goes in there. It just spurs things along, and in the presentation, I think I heard it, it will save up to three years of time in being able to make this happen. You know, the biggest challenge in front of us now is getting that workforce here in New Hanover County. That's going to be our challenge now. Never thought we'd see that day, where we're, you know, scrambling for it, but here we are, and happening, and just seems again like a heartbeat. Thank you. And with that, Madam Vice Chair, ready for the vote?
Okay, I just want to say thank you. Anytime we can bring industry and jobs to New Hanover County, it's a good day, and we're happy to partner in that. Thank you for choosing our county to invest in, and so we appreciate that. And with that said, we have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Thank you all. We will have public comment now. We have two folks signed up for public comment. You will have three minutes to address the commission. Ms. Leslie Posey, if you'll state your name and address for the record.
My name is Leslie Posey. My address is two-thirteen Longleaf Acres Drive in Wilmington. I am a founding member of the New Hanover County Educational Justice. We are a group of parents and retired teachers formed to advocate for teachers, students in our county. While watching your budget workshop last week, we were very concerned. It appeared that you were not given all the necessary information concerning the extreme staffing shortages that New Hanover County Schools already has, and how much worse it will be if the proposed staff cuts are made. I was particularly surprised that your information didn't include cuts to the EC departments. This is a list of the proposed staff cuts that was given to the Board of Education at their budget meeting on February twelfth. I have a copy for each of you. This proposal would cut two-hundred-seventy-nine positions in our schools. These are a few of the proposed cuts. Seventeen EC teachers, sixty-nine EC teacher assistants, four family life teachers, which are student-facing, even though they're listed here as central office. Their teaching duties would be added to those of the already-swamped PE teachers. Ten guidance counselors, seventeen social workers, seventy-one classroom teachers. And as you can see, that's only a partial list. Contrary to what has been said at school board meetings, attrition will not change these numbers. The number of staff lost will remain the same. For example, if a second-grade teacher retired at the end of the year, but a new teacher wasn't hired to fill that position, school administration is defining that as the number of reducing the number of jobs lost. It won't. Our students are already suffering from a lack of trained teachers and staff. Classes are incredibly overcrowded. I know of at least one high school class of Math II that is being taught entirely on a computer program with supervision from whomever is available. Our students are not safe. Police officers on campus do not replace the trained counselors and social workers our kids need. As you've heard in several of the presentations this morning, there are programs available to help our kids. Our kids need those programs, but they're not getting them because they're not being staffed. Schools are critical to our society. If we create a pyramid of what is most important, education would be at the bottom, holding everything else up. People are not going to come to New Hanover County for all these wonderful jobs if they can't bring their kids to good schools. Our kids, their future, and our future need you to step up and do what is right, and that is funding our schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Posey.
Can I give this to you?
Yes, right over here to your left. Kim will take that. Thank you for bringing that for us. Ms. Yvonne Pollard?
Hello. My name is Yvonne, representing the family of Pollard in Columbus County. As a living woman in the center of five generations, mother, grandmother, I have my mother and my grandmother, my daughter and my granddaughter, so that's the five of us. From a family of great people, I have teachers, nurses, firefighters, engineers, military, veterans, et cetera, those are just a few of my siblings. We maintain a position as landowners, homeowners, business owners. The reality for us with DSS and CPS is an ongoing nightmare. It's causing deep trauma. They've severed a bond that should have never been severed with siblings, my granddaughter. I feel we were prejudged, and the allegations were clearly rebuttable assumptions, and we've been silenced pretty much under the guise of being safety or the best interest of our heirs. In April of two thousand and twenty-nineteen, we welcomed our heiress, and due to the interference of DSS and CPS, she was deemed to be safe with her plan. And she was with me. In less than ninety days, she was seized at a daycare. There was no documentation. I questioned the jurisdiction because there was no reports of any non-accidental injury. That's the most important thing. I've never been charged with anything. We're still fighting for her. The fiction that was created in her file in those ninety days that was- The fiction that was created in her file in those 90 days that was passed on from one agent to the next agent became more sensational than the facts. She was never injured, abused, harmed, neglected. In closing, just want to say that the agents need to be held in dishonor. They did not preserve our family legacy as they promised. They did not assist our family as a unit to keep us reunified, and they did not inform our family of any changes in the plan that I've signed. I'm approved kinship care, approved for the safety plan, and there were no, all allegations were unsubstantiated. What they did was took our flower from our natural and biological family. They planted her out of place and expecting her to become a rose, like growing through the cracks in the sidewalk. She's not where she's supposed to be, and we ask that you tell CPS that adoption is not an option because they thrive better with their tribe. And please, we're seeking that you would assist us to bring Taiba home.
Thank you, Ms. Pollard.
Thank you.
Are there any additional items around the room, commissioners? Manager? Okay, then we will adjourn this meeting. Thank you all for being here.